Okay. So I guess we'll get started now. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the May 28th Board of Selectmen meeting via Zoom. Let's start it off by doing the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. One day we'll get that, all these Zoom meetings are the same, it's never together with the pledge, but we'll, we'll keep working on that. Okay, item number two, the approval of the minutes from the May 14th meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve our minutes from our May 14th, 2020 meeting.
Please state your name.
Lauren Raven.
Okay, is there a second?
Jill has to unmute.
Sorry, Jill Oberlander, I second that motion.
Thank you, okay. All those in-
I'm sorry, I also have to append the agenda, so I'm sorry, we can do it after the vote.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yay.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. I'd like to make a motion to agenda, to append our agenda, new braces, adding an agenda item to old business, to add the 2020 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program update to our old business.
I will, I will second that motion, and I also have an item to add to the agenda, so I guess maybe we'll do two items.
Okay, under old business?
I think it's new business.
Okay. You'll need to make separate motions and votes on that, one is old and one is new business.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I second Lauren's motion to add to the old business.
Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, three, three to nothing, and Jill, you want to make your-
Yes, I have a motion to add an item of new business, which is the interim appointment of Assistant Kick, Assistant Chief Bob Kick, to be the interim fire chief effective June 1st.
Okay. Now, is that a discussion or is that for, what are you calling for with that, Jill?
I'm calling to put it on the agenda as a new agenda item, the-
To discuss.
To, well, it can be to take it up and to discuss, but my motion would be to have the Board of Selectmen approve that appointment accordance, in accordance with the charter.
Okay, well, I just had another conversation with a town attorney and this one with John Wetmore, and again, a strong feeling that that's not needed, that it's already been done. But certainly I would love to have the discuss. I would not support it for a vote, but I would support the discussion, so if you want to rephrase that, or unless you want to do, if you want your, for a vote, we certainly vote on that.
Yeah, I will, I'm gonna, I'll put it on for a discussion and a vote, and then, because I think it does require a vote of the Board of Selectmen, so I'd like, the motion is to put it on the agenda for discussion and a vote, so it-
So, Mr. Town Attorney, then, I certainly support part of that, the discussion that Jill wants to bring forward. I don't think a vote is needed, and I've, you know, had many conversations because of this being brought up, so could we separate that out, or what's your-
I don't think you have to, you know, personally, I don't think you have to worry about the matter, meaning that, assuming you put it on the agenda under new business, there can be, there can be a motion, or, you know, to get it on the table for purposes of discussion, and then, after your discussion, there can be a subsequent motion to approve, or the motion to approve can fail for lack of a second, or it can be voted down or up.
Okay, thank you, so I would second Jill's motion. All those in favor?
Jill Oberlander, I vote yes.
Thank you, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, three to nothing, thank you. With that, we've already approved the minutes, so I guess we go to item three now, and update, so I'll try to give you a shortened version of everything that's going on. We've, the COVID-19 updates, we've seen an uptick in the last few days. That's, you know, from everybody we're talking to, that's normal and to be expected now with things being opened up and people going outside, and it's more, even more the reason that we have to, in our daily discussions with people and press releases and forums, to keep reminding people to bring a mask with them, because now they're going to be more in contact with each other, so now more than ever, we really don't want to take any steps backwards, so I would hope that people bring their masks with them, can continue keeping a distance, and, and washing their hands, because again, we're not, we're not through with this yet, so we, even though we're doing, overall, we're doing very, very well here in Greenwich, we have seen a little bit of an uptick in the last few days, so just FYI there. As far as the partial reopenings, we spent a couple hours with the governor on Monday. On Tuesday, I went on his daily brief press conference, and he was very, very enthusiastic about what we're doing here in Greenwich. Has said it at many of his press conferences now, about possibly closing off the avenue or mending it, so it's a little bit more of a pedestrian mall feel to it, but also still, we're still going to allow traffic and certainly gonna make sure there's enough parking there. So we're, we have a plan, it's evolving, and we're getting the buy-in from, this Chamber of Commerce is very supportive of it. I've asked Marcia to reach out to all of the, all of the merchants, and I've started to see a bunch of the responses. I haven't gotten through all of them yet, but most of them are very, very positive with a few questions, so we're answering as they go along. We really do want to address all their concerns. I think everybody's anxious to get out there, just how we do all this, you know, we'll fill you in a little bit later, later in the, in the meeting on it, but lots of exciting things going on here in Greenwich, and, you know, it's the old saying, you gotta crawl before you can walk, and we're certainly trying to do that, but we're trying to do it in a measured way, so people are brought along together with us, so we don't just present something at the 11th hour to people, and then have people say, you know, bring up all types of concerns and questions, so it may take a little longer that way, but we want to make sure that everybody's concerns are addressed, so with that, things are reopening, expanding, we're expanding the hours at the beaches and the parks, the marinas, the courts, the tennis courts that have opened, we're now gonna have them allow doubles to be played there. We're all getting questions about pools, but that's, the state has already said not yet to the opening, so we can't, we can't do anything that conflicts with that executive order. But if there's any other questions, certainly that, you know, we don't know if there's a conflict, that we can reach back with the, with the administration, both Governor Lamott, Lieutenant Governor Baissowitz, Director Lehman, our Commissioner Lehman, DCD, they've been really responsive, and, and in many cases, reaching out to us, so it's, it's a good partnership, but we're, we're moving along, and Phase Two, which is slated to be June 20th, I asked Ned on the Avenue on Monday if it's still 20, the 20th, and he said they may, they may try for a little earlier, and he asked my thoughts on that, and, you know, I think, I think the state as well as the town is ready to do a little bit, maybe move this up a little bit more, but we have to be prepared to pull back if we see non-compliance, if we see the spikes getting too high and too consistent. So that's where we are, so far, so good, but we want to make sure that we're aware of the fact that now people are going to be out more in closer proximity, that we need to continue to be, take all the precautions. So with that, I will turn it over to Selectwoman Raven.
Thanks, Fred. So just briefly, we are still engaged with the Commission on Aging and the RTM calling the senior population in town. We moved from the over 80 age group to the over 75 age group, that represents about 3,300 households, just to put it into some perspective, so that's going along very well, appreciated on both sides, the person who's getting the call and the person who's making the call. I've announced a few times, we've been busy interviewing folks for the boards and commissions, so I just want to make an announcement here at about 4:25, just because of scheduling, we're gonna go into executive session so that we can interview a candidate. It came to our attention over the weekend that there was a vacancy in a commission since October of 2019, it should have been nominated and appointed, so we want to make sure we take care of that before the June RTM meeting on the 8th. And that's it for my update.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, Selectwoman Oberlander, her updates.
Thank you, Fred. Yes, similar to Lauren, involved in the interview process for boards and commissions, I've been, I was also working with the Harbor Management Commission on their interview process for a new Harbor Master, and continuing my work with the United Way Grants Committee for the COVID Relief Fund and understanding what's happening with not-for-profits in town, and fielding questions as well from the community, many questions about summer camps, opportunities for our youth, especially given the increased demands on distancing, social distancing and uncleanliness and the impacts that's having on our summer programs, so trying to work with town departments and not-for-profits to try to see if the town can be a little bit more flexible and allow greater space to get some of our youth who are now finding themselves with a lot more time on their hand otherwise occupied, so. Oh, and working as well, I'm sure Fred is gonna announce later, Pedal Greenwich coming up this weekend on some, the Sustainability Committee is still work, working on their own on different projects, and one of them is increasing bicycle awareness and also usage, especially during this, this stage of stay-at-home. I'll let, I'll let Fred do the announcement on Pedal Greenwich, which I'm super excited about. I saw GPVs ready for it. I want to do a special shout-out to Public Works, who has installed recently, I think they're 26, new bike awareness signs along routes where cyclists are frequently riding, so that drivers can be a little bit more aware of other users of the road, just part of our effort to encourage people to get out, to get riding, to be healthy and to be safe. So, Fred, I don't know whether you want to add something on Pedal Greenwich?
Sure, well, thank you, and you forgot to salute one person, and that's yourself, because you've been a big advocate for this from the beginning, and I support you in this, and I think that we can actually use this, you'll see these around town, these flyers. We could use this Pedal Greenwich, this event, to possibly, on the other end, is to start to promote more consistent bike routes and racks around town. We have, we just saw, we had one in front of town, who I never even realized it the other day, but we'd like to see more around town. So, the Pedal Greenwich event that Jill's talking about is this Saturday, May 30th. Ride your bike on favorite roads and explore new ones, post photos of you riding your bike on social media using the hashtag #pedalgrenwich. And it should be fun, a fun day, and hopefully, if it, if there is, if it rains on Saturday, Bob D'Angelo said he will make a call to the Board of Selectmen to let us know if it's been put off to Sunday, Sunday's supposed to be better, so hopefully, it won't have to be, but if it does, we have a rain date, and hopefully, people will get out there, and, you know, whether it's biking this week or just walking or hiking, this is, I'm starting to see a lot more physical activity, which is a very good thing, and so this is just one component of it, so thanks. Jill, thank you. Okay, so that, that's updates. Now we're gonna go to the old business, so we have two items now. The first is the Town Attorney Retainer Agreement with Town Attorney Vincent Marino. And we have that in our packets there. Any discussion on, on the retainer agreement? Lauren?
Nope.
Jill?
Jill has to unmute.
Sorry, not only, not only was my son calling me repeatedly, I apologize, but I was on mute, thankfully. I think someone muted me when my phone kept going off. Yeah, I actually did want to comment on the Town Attorney Retainer Agreement. First, I want to thank Ben, who has been extraordinarily responsive to my inquiries over the last couple of months. It is something that we talked about when I first met him in January. It was something I highlighted in my remarks in, in January, that my abstention at the time had no reflection on, on Mr. Marino's abilities, but it was on process, and so I do want to clarify for everybody listening and for the record that I have found Mr. Marino to be 100% responsive to any, any inquiry, any phone call or any email, and I do appreciate it. I've made a couple of comments on his legal retainer, and he's incorporated them and clarified some points. There is, there's one outstanding point that, that Mr. Marino and I did discuss over the phone, was not reflected in the revised retainer, and I just want to clarify for the record that the, the understanding of the hiring of the town attorney, initially, it was presented as a law firm contract. He, Mr. Marino has, has changed his law firm's structure, and, but it, but the understanding was that he is the primary point of contact as the town attorney, and the representation of the town will be based on his experience and expertise, and that he will be the supervising attorney of anybody he asks to fill in for him, as well as he will be rotating his colleagues through the office so that there's, there's familiarity with the other attorneys that may cover for him when he's not available, and won't be tied into one specific attorney. Is that, is that, is my understanding correct, Mr. Marino?
You are correct.
Terrific, so even though the retainer suggested it could be one attorney, it will be a rotating course, and that all of the legal work will come out under your, your name and supervision.
Unless I'm otherwise unavailable and there's an urgency to get it out, yes, it'll be under my supervision.
So, so thank you for your responsiveness, and, and with that, I have no further questions, and I would move the adoption of the retainer agreement.
Okay. Okay, second, there's a second, all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, three to nothing, thank you very much, and I'll echo what Jill said, that Ben has been very, very responsive, and, and very comfortable giving me information that may not be with, my opinion may have been at the beginning, and it's really greatly appreciated, and the fact that you're making good, you will make good on the fact that there'll always be somebody here and who are familiar with the workings of our town government here on Field Point Road, and looking forward to a long relationship here, so thank you, Ben.
So am I, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to item B, which is the Neighborhood Assistance Program update, and I think Tyler is on, hi Tyler.
Hey, friend, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. So, Tyler Fraburne with the Community Development Office. I am just providing a quick update on the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. At the, at the Board of Selectmen meeting on May 14th, there was a discussion about reopening the application period for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. So shortly after that meeting, I emailed our community partners, who we normally email as part of our Neighborhood Assistance Act notification process, let everybody know that it was reopened and they had until May 26th to submit an application that we would then include in our final package to the state after RTM approval in June. We did receive one extra application. It was from the YWCA for $150,000 for their boiler project, which was not funded as part of the 2020 CDBG process. They'd requested $200,000 there. The advisory committee in the first selectmen did not recommend funding for that project, just, not because there's anything wrong with it, it was really just the, the size of the ask in relation to how much we had available. So that wasn't funded, but they have come in for $150,000 for the Neighborhood Assistance Act, so I, I have not spoken with anyone at the Y, I'm not sure if they have a corporate sponsor, partner lined up, but they, they've done the first step, which is to get the application in, so we will submit that in July after RTM approval, and that's my only update there, if there are any questions about that particular application or the NAA program in general.
Nothing on this end.
Not for me, thank you.
Okay, Tyler, thank you so much for, again, for all your work on this. It's a lot of vetting that goes into all these things, and I know you do it in a very fair way, in an open way, so we thank you.
Thank you for having me, and I will, I'll be in touch with any updates, but I assume we'll, you know, everything will, will go as planned, and we'll have this out to the state in July.
Thank you very much, thanks, Tyler.
Yeah, and thank you for reopening and giving an opportunity to the community to supplement.
Absolutely, I think it was a great idea, and I'm glad we got an extra, extra application in, and it's, I hope it works out for the Y.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, that does it for old business, and we're gonna go on to new business. First on the agenda is tipping fees for MSW, Municipal Solid Waste, and we have our Public Works Commissioner Amy Seabert. Is Amy on?
Yep, good afternoon, folks.
Hi, Amy.
Amy Seabert here from the Department of Public Works. And as you all may recall, on May 11th, just as past May 11th here, the RTM passed an amendment to our Chapter 9 in the Towns Code dealing with waste collection and disposal. And I apologize, I don't have video here today, so I'm getting that little nice note saying, please start my video, so I'm not doing it to be a pill for you, I just don't happen to have it today. So, basically, that ordinance change asks us to implement a tipping fee for solid waste, for, for trash at the transfer station. We prepared some information that went into your packets. It explains how we have to have a tipping fee and an annual residential fee, that latter fee for not to exceed $25 per household. We provided you with a copy of Chapter 9, so you can see the language that was passed by the RTM. So, what we did was, we went back and we looked at the costs of city carting, who handles our operation management hauling and disposal of solid waste. We throw all that in there, because again, the costs that are incurred for handling trash include the operating of that actual transfer station building. If folks are familiar with Holly Hill, you go down there, that building where you see the big trucks back in and dump waste on the floor, the side where local folks, before this exciting pandemic time, would, would throw their trash in through the windows there. So, we took that, what we did was, we took their monthly operating fee, and this is in a little table on page two of the document that we gave you. We took their annual, the monthly fee, took the total cost of that for the year, looking forward, an estimated MSW tonnage. The dollars there that are noted, the $93.66, that's the actual hauling and disposal fee. Gets a little confusing, calling it a tipping fee, too many tipping fees to, can get a little confusing here, but added those figures together, again, that management fee, that actual disposal fee, you take that sum, that 3.9 million, divide it by the 35,000 tons, and you get a figure of $112 a ton. That is a proposal to cover the solid waste we expect to see disposed of here in the coming year. Again, we can never perfectly forecast how much solid waste we're gonna get in any given year, and then we go on to describe that we need the, to set the fee for that household annual use, and it says in the code, the RTM passed language saying it cannot exceed the $25 per household. We recommend then that it be set at that $25, so that at least the town can recoup some of the costs of that. The goal of this, of course, all being to recoup the cost of solid waste disposal, get it out of where it's been traditionally, out of the, the budget, so that we can help, help do something to manage the pressures on the budget in this coming year. So with that quick run-through, I'm sure you all have, have questions and so forth, we can discuss this item.
Thank you, Amy. Yeah, just to be clear, I know some people are asking, you know, how the fee got to the 112 from 93, you explained it. Our, some of our neighboring towns are on 110, and I think the feeling is, you don't want to go below that to encourage the town garbage to be sent here. I think what's gonna happen, there are some facilities in the area that are a little bit below what we are, and you may see some of the haulers bringing the garbage there, but it won't, you won't have the opposite effect. I spoke with many haulers about the recycling efforts. As I go around town, I've discovered, you know, a couple of multifamilies where there's no recycling going on, because people sometimes don't report back to the hauler, so they're all gonna be, because now that's gonna be paid for, the haulers are really gonna be, I think, super vigilant about, you know, separating items from the municipal solid waste, anything that's recyclable. I think you're gonna see those numbers go up, I think you'll see the MSW numbers go down, because now with this, there's gonna be a cost to it, but they're, they're, they've been great partners for, for many, many years, and they're just like in 1989 and 1991, and with Single Stream, they're gonna really pull it together and make us all proud and get these numbers, MSW numbers down and recycling numbers up. But one quick note about the $25 fee, I have spoken with many RTM members who also believe that, because it was only a half hour spent on it when they voted on these fees, that that fee is in fact way too low. $25, I personally thought was a very good number for, for maybe senior citizens, but I think in the, in the future, that's probably gonna be revisited, because it really, there's a fairness issue there. People who have haulers are now gonna be sharing in that cost of transporting the garbage out, but if you take your garbage down, it's only $25. You can, you could hit that number pretty quickly, and the rest of it's gonna be picked up by the rest of the citizens, so I think there's a better number out there, and I think lots of people that I spoke to, both on the RTM and not on the RTM and on the public at large, acknowledge that. So, we'll, we'll, when we get that committee going to look at how we handle solid waste in the town in the next 12 to 18 months, I think we'll, we'll, we'll improve, this will evolve, and I think we'll improve on our, our system here. Just wanted to get those comments in there, and see if anybody else wants to comment. Lauren?
Sure, I just have a couple of questions. Well, one was on the $25 fee, because the way it's being presented is gonna be for anybody who goes to Holly Hill, and I think I've mentioned this in the past, I'm not physically bringing trash there, but I do go to the, when it's open again, the goodwill to donate textiles and household items. So, is that $25 fee gonna be to enter Holly Hill, even though you're not disposing of municipal solid waste? So, I looked at what some of the other towns did. There seemed to be different fees if you were already paying a hauler, which I personally do, or you don't pay a hauler, so maybe that might be something to think about, separate fees. But again, the question, and I know it's gonna be hard to police, because how are you gonna make sure that Lauren Raven just donated, you know, the clothes that don't fit her anymore, as opposed to, you know, throwing out some municipal waste? The other question I had was around city carting being our remover, as well as, like, someone bringing in, as well as somebody taking out. I've heard some things in the community, questions around, you know, that relationship, so maybe just a little bit of, a little bit of explanation there. And then the third thing, it's just totally random, there seemed to be a year where we had so much yard waste, 2013. I'm trying to remember what we could have been living through in 2013 to have so much yard waste.
Storm Sandy was in, at the end of 2012, that may have had something to do with that. I had a big tree in my backyard, so that may have had something to do with it.
Yeah, it was a total side question.
So I don't want to hog up the conversation here. So I know city carting's been there for 12 years. I will defer to Amy here as far as the details of the relationship. I know some of about it, but I certainly will defer to the department.
So a couple of answers here for you, Lauren. DPW, we tried to be as clear as we could that, given through this whole process, that we do need a permit for everyone coming in, because we just, we hear what you're saying, and we have no way to police who's going where once they get in that gate. So we're looking for that permit for everybody. Now, I think that's something that certainly can be looked at with, you know, this working group, we discuss it with at least one committee that, if folks remembered all the way back to, I want to say it was maybe about 2012, when we got approval for a master plan for Holly Hill, if we implemented that, we'd be in a different situation, but we hadn't, and that's understandable. There are capital budget pressures everywhere. So we're going to do what we can, but that paid permit, we do, you know, I think that's frankly why they probably put a $25 value on it, because everybody knew they needed to have a permit to get in. And some people have argued, why do I have to pay it all? Some people not. But it is something that, again, without adding staff or adding anything else to it, we need to implement that. Good news is for you that it looks like Goodwill is opening at their spot out on, I believe somewhere out on the Post Road, ahead of our opening at Holly Hill. So you may have, folks may have an outlet there ahead of Holly Hill, and have some options and so forth on that. You asked about city carting as a hauler versus city carting as an operator. Every commercial hauler has its commercial vehicles licensed, so they're all inspected, they are all weighed, they're all put over the scale, and they are all treated equally. The fact that they won the bid back in the day, back around 2078, a very large process done in conjunction with a group of towns who were getting out from under the Swaroc Swab Agreement, a regional agreement, where we had mandatory quantities we had to pay for and deliver, and we were kind of really locked in with the CRRA. You know, they won that contract, and to be fair to them, they provided the town very good service through a number of challenging times. And again, their trucks, when they leave, are all weighed, so a lot of eyes on the whole process. A lot of people have insinuated a lot of things about them, about each other. We jokingly say, I like to talk a lot of trash about each other, but we do the best we can to keep an eye on all of it, and, you know, what people are doing out in the field, we can't speak to, but at least within Holly Hill, we can see folks are doing the right thing. And then the third question, Fred is right on, 2013, we still had the aftermath of Super Storm Sandy, and so on, you know, a large amount of organic debris coming from ongoing cleanup of all of that.
Thank you, Amy.
Jill?
Thanks. Just a little bit more information, because I'm not as familiar with the operations of Holly Hill and city carting. Are they, they only operate the municipal solid waste component? They are not involved in any of their organic waste, whether it be yard or leaves or bulky waste? How does that work? How do you divide up the operations?
So we, they do have other contracts there at this time. So they won the, they won the MSW contract back in the day. They bid on the recycling contract, so they did win that contract. Again, all publicly bid, you know, they're a large operator, they came in, and frankly, it's almost a good thing they won recycling, because they have to, that has to be shared on the tipping floor. So both garbage or municipal solid waste and recycling are put on the same floor. So in future, we'd probably look to bid those out together, because it's very complicated to try to run that if you had multiple operators trying to handle that. We also bid out bulky waste, which are, we call it construction and demolition debris, or the big, you know, the construction waste that, you know, people in their cars bring in, or, you know, leftover furniture, things that are not going to go on the tipping floor. I believe City won that contract also back in the day. Again, these are all publicly bid through purchasing.
I'm not, I'm not challenging.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just letting you know that that's, they're all, they're all out there. I just want, I know you're not, just so the audience knows that we go ahead and do that. And organics, we bid out, let's see, I'm getting some help here, I have a Lifeline. Organics was bid out about two years ago, and I think they won that as well. What we've seen is that we have all of about two, I think on some of these bids, we're seeing only about two firms compete with each other. It is kind of interesting, there's not, we're not seeing a huge competition for this kind of work.
But that's all for the removal work, correct? Sorry, I wasn't clear on my question, I was asking about the management contract.
So the MSW contract, what we did for the MSW contract, they're responsible for operating the transfer station building. So they manage that building, they do some basic operations and maintenance on the building, pay utilities, deal with stormwater management, they have the staffing of it, they deal with the equipment that is moving material on the tipping floor and so forth, in addition to providing the trucks and the drivers that take the material away. For recycling, what we asked for, when we went out to bid for recycling, we asked for recyclables, hauling and disposal, and some, I'd have to go back and look, Jill, whether we asked for any like, any additional management. Bulky waste and organics, again, are all pretty much hauling and disposal. Sometimes in some of those contracts, what we'll put in is, we'll ask them for a price if they load versus if we load, because again, we have a large loader down at the, at the Holly Hill site that we can use to load trailers as well. So that way, we have that option based on what we, what we need, so we sometimes get that pricing for that. Not sure if that answers your question.
Well, what I was trying, so I was trying to understand, as you know, from my email, is the incremental cost from the 93.66 to the 112, and looking at your chart in terms of total waste, why we're not dividing up the management fee by the 60,000 in 2018, I think this is tonnage, right? Yes, the 60,000 tons versus the 35,000 or 36,000 tons.
Not sure I'm following you.
So when you're allocating the tipping fee, when we're setting the tipping fee for municipal solid waste disposal, okay, it's hitting the, the people that are, the entire management fee, the 634.118, is hitting the haulers who are delivering municipal solid waste to the tonnage. So it's divided up essentially by the 35,000 in tonnage. By your charts, it looks like there's an additional 25,000 tons of other materials for which we're not charging, that we are charging something, but we're not allocating the management fee to that waste. So I was wondering whether the management contract covers the administration of that waste as well, or whether we have separate management contracts for each category of waste, to understand whether, in fact, if we only divided it, if we divided it by the 60,000 versus the 35, we would have a lower incremental cost allocated just to municipal solid waste.
I see.
Do you understand where, what I'm?
Yes, I think so, yes. Thank you.
So that's why I was trying to understand the management aspect of it, as opposed to, because I think it's, it is a little murky, especially if we don't, if you don't know the details.
Right. So yard waste and bulky waste do not hit the tipping floor? We don't have, we don't have them managed, so to speak, by city carting? So those waste types are brought in, they land on the ground at Holly Hill out in the yard, and we deal with the, you know, the loading of them, and they're hauled and disposed of. So the costs associated with them are paid for through those contracts for hauling and disposal. They don't have a separate group of staff for overall management being attached to them that's part of MSW.
So who loads and hauls? Is it the DPW employees?
We load, I believe at this time, we're loading the bulky and the organics. I believe we are loading both of those. If we were having, but what I was alluding to is, in those contracts, what we've typically done is that we have a cost in those contracts for bulky and leaves, in the event we needed that contractor to do the loading, that price is in that contract. We wouldn't use the MSW side of the house to do that work, if that makes sense.
So the 634 is solely attributable to the MSW?
Right. It's for, it's for running that, that, that actual building down there, and for pushing and loading those trailers with that MSW.
So you're saying, in effect, that the 112 per ton is our actual cost to operate and remove the waste that's deposited there?
Right. And obviously, that number will, you can see just by the math, if you get more or less, you're always trying to figure out what, you know, your division there may, your number may adjust a little, because you can't perfectly forecast your actual tonnage you're going to get in the coming year.
Correct, correct. But based on the, if you have a 35, if you're basing the fee on a $35,000 ton volume, that's slightly lower than where we've been for the last five or six years, according to your chart.
Yep.
So we're not over, and, you know, we're not slightly lower, so if we get more, we'll get more money, right? So, but it's not slightly low, so it could have been, there's a little bit of excess that runs to our advantage versus the haulers, the fee on the haulers. I'm thinking out loud, right? I'm thinking about it, right? It runs a little bit to our advantage. I did think, looking at your chart, it looks like there's only one community, Westport, that is close to the 112. They're at 110, and all the other neighboring communities on your chart are, you know, between 85 and 104 at the highest, but most of them are in the 80s and 90s. So I guess it just raises the question as to why we're so much higher in actual costs? Or do those communities subsidize?
All reasonable questions, you know, having not gotten into the, you know, super details of all of these, I know Blaze Levitan helped us put this all together, so he would, may have more of the actual background. And then what you find is, each community, what we have seen over time, is each community is different in terms of, you know, their, their contract with the hauler, do they have residential pickup that they pay for? So the tip fee is really for the commercial businesses, so to speak, some communities are organized that way. Some communities are closer to Bridgeport, we've seen, then they have a lower hauling cost. So a number of factors in there can affect the, the actual tonnage. And indeed, Jill, you're right, they may be just calculating it differently. They may say, oh, we only wanted to use the hauling and disposal fee and not include, you know, an operation and management fee.
Right, right. I just lost my train of thought on, on, oh, everyone is going to pay the tipping fee, other than the resident, the individual residents who will bring it themselves? So for the town buildings, will be charged back a tipping fee as well, is that correct?
That would, that would be something we would expect to see, yes.
Right. So that any, any trash that, any, any commercial hauler, whether it be for a town route, a not-for-profit route, a private route, they, they will be charged the tipping fee, and will have to decide whether to, you know, how they're going to charge their customers.
Right. We talked a little bit about what makes this challenging, you know, routes are, as we've discussed throughout, the discussion of how solid waste is picked up in town, right? We know routes are mixed, just as you said. So, you know, can you go to your hauler, which, you know, we can try and say, hey, if you're picking up all our trash bins on Greenwich Avenue, can we set up our contract such that we, you, you only pick up all our stuff and you don't mix routes? Hard to, maybe hard to audit, but again, you know, we'll, we'll see how that all unfolds with this.
Yeah. So, and my understanding is, you're, when are you rebidding the city carting contract next?
I believe in 20, I believe 2023.
Okay, so two years.
I think, Jill, I'll have to make sure I'm right on that, I gotta.
I thought it was one year.
They have another extension.
Okay. And I know we have to go into an interview, I did want to encourage DPW to, and I will forward along my specific questions on metrics, there's great interest in the community, and I know you share it, Amy, and probably practice it more than, than most, on trash reduction, and which will lower our overall costs and is better for the environment. And so trying to figure out on a town basis where we're starting and how we can better improve our own trash profile, I think will allow us to make a good argument over the next year for waste reduction strategies, if we're able to implement them, and no better way than to know exactly our numbers. So to the extent that we can negotiate for segregated routes that will allow us to track our progress on trash production, I think the entire community would benefit.
Sure.
Before we go, Jill, just to answer, circle back, Norwalk's 85, Stanford's 95. I thought New Canaan and Darien were around 110. Portchester is, I believe, 110. I know, I believe Westport, and I believe Trumbull just charged their, the commercial haulers, but I could double-check on that.
Yeah, I was just going by the chart that was included in our package, which only, for which, only Westport is at 110, doesn't have Portchester, I guess it's all Connecticut-based. It doesn't have Trumbull either, but of all of the other communities.
Did it have Darien in that?
Yeah, Darien at 94.
94, okay.
You know, Fred, you're remembering well, though, because I remember, I have a family person there, and I remember that things may have shifted or changed around. It used to be up over that $100 number.
It may have been 110, and that, Amy, I think you're right. So, yeah.
Darien used to have a high number, too.
Yeah, I seem to remember that. That's why I was, and I think Portchester may be at 110 now, but they do seem to be moving around a little bit, but good, all good questions, and I guess I'll turn it over to Select Woman Raven.
Yeah, so apologies, everyone, we're going to have to go into our executive session. This came to us late notice, and this was the only time we can do it. We're going to be back on at 4:50, so I appreciate everyone that's here for the temporary closure for Greenwich Avenue. We'll be back, so we're all going to go on mute, hide our videos.
Okay, before we go and mute, I will need a motion.
Yes.
And a second to go into executive session.
Thank you, Barbara. So I motion that we go into executive session for 28.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion. Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All of them in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, see you in a few minutes.
Lauren, I wasn't sure, but I hung up abruptly and then wasn't sure whether we were done there, so I apologize. Can you hear me? You can't hear me? No.
Here you are.
You can hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, who's that, Craig?
Yep, it's Craig.
Okay, maybe Lauren can't hear me. Lauren?
Do you mind turning the microphone off? Lauren, can you hear us? I'll text her.
So can you still hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Jill.
Okay, my video is turned off by you guys, I guess, right?
There you go.
Okay.
Need Fred to come back.
Okay, and I'll let you hit.
Fred, is that you?
And Lauren, do you want, let me know when you want me to hit record or you can, I mean, press, continue the recording, or you can do it whenever you like, just the little play button, you can hit that to start recording again.
We're back.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes, you do.
So, so moved?
Seconded.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, three to nothing, we are back from our meeting, back in session here. So we finished the first item for the new business, and then we're on to item B of new.
Fred, before we move to item B, we do have two people with their hands raised. So the first one is Pucci Carding. So Mr. Pucci, I'm going to unmute you, and if you can announce yourself, please. Pucci Carding, are you there?
Maybe trying to un.
Or maybe he doesn't realize we're back. So I'm going to go ahead and mute him and we'll see if he comes back and raises his hand.
I know.
That's for the raised hand.
I know, believe me, I know.
So for the tipping fees, are we voting today?
You need to take a vote on that.
This is a first read, are we voting?
You're being requested to vote on those proposed tipping fees.
Okay. And we'll skip back, if Angelo comes back on, we can circle back to him. Okay, so is there any more discussing, discussing?
Can we push the vote on this to the end of the meeting in the event that Mr. Pucci does come back on and wants to speak? Before we take the vote, I just would, since we know that he had had his hand raised, I'd rather give him the opportunity to speak before we vote?
I, I think so, and I'm trying to contact him now, so I would support that. He may have left. Is he still listed on?
Yeah, he's still listed as an attendee, but may have walked away from his device.
Let me, I'm going to turn my phone up, see if I can contact him.
Then, in the meantime, may I ask a question of you concerning procedure? This is Barbara. Do we need a special motion to delay the, of the order of taking the votes on this, the tipping fee?
I mean, you're, you're, from an agenda standpoint, you went in order, you're just deferring the vote. So I don't, I don't think it's out of order to hold the vote to the end of the meeting. I think you can do that.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
We also have Chris Pratiko has his hand raised. So Chris, I'm going to allow you to talk, and if you could announce yourself, please.
You, unmute Blaze.
Lauren, can I sneak in here real quick? I just want you guys to know, I have a 5:30, so if you guys put something off or you have questions for me, I apologize, but I wouldn't be on after, after that time. So just throwing that out there for you.
Okay, thank you for letting us know, Amy. Chris, can you announce yourself, please?
Yes, it's Chris Pratiko, Fire Marshal.
Oh, great.
I was having some difficulties with my computer here, can you guys see me and hear me okay?
We can hear you, and I'm going to promote you to analyst. I wasn't sure if you, sorry, I should have known who you were, sorry about that.
Can you guys see me okay?
We can't see you yet, are you showing your video?
I'm trying to, let's see, hold on. Okay, here we go.
There, thanks, thanks for coming back.
All right, thanks for.
All right, so are we going to move to the next agenda? I am, but Amy does have to leave at, by 5:30.
Yeah, Angelo, Angela Pucci was trying to, he doesn't know how to unmute himself right now, so I, I don't know how we fix that problem. I mean, I could certainly.
We can unmute him, but he needs to talk.
Yeah, I mean, how about if I just hold my phone up, would that serve?
How about if I allow him to talk and he just speaks?
He's not, he's having a hard time with the microphone. So if I, how about if I just hold up his, my phone, so you guys could hear? Because I have him on the, I have him on the cell phone. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, Angelo, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so now I'm going to, Angelo, I'm going to hold the phone up to the computer. So now you're speaking to everybody on the Zoom conference. So you had your hand raised to speak on the tipping fee, so the floor is yours.
Okay, Fred, I guess I want to direct my question to Amy, that when she was bringing this all together, did she consult with any of the haulers on this big, big project that we're about to undertake? To get some input from us, so we can all come up with the right decisions when we're, when we're putting this all together? Mrs. Oberlander made some good comments that there's a lot more involved in this thing than this, this $25 thing that the people are putting in. That is so unfair to the other people who are paying haulers, that it's going to cause some problems out there. That's what, why they voted on that, I'll tell you when they voted on that, because the gentleman on the RTM who voted on that brings his own garbage to the dump. He voted on the $25 item, because that's what he wanted it for him. And again, the RTM only spent 30 minutes on something such, so big as this, and they spent two hours on, on your item, when they were trying to, you know, reprimand you, Fred. So you talk about what they did, the RT, the way they handled it was so unfair. They had no empathy for the people out of work, the businesses that are shut down. We were only asking that to give them a little more time, a couple of months, let everybody get back on their feet, so that, so they can get their businesses back together, the people can get back to their jobs. But it was never, never consulted, and they shut it right down. They never gave a lot of people, there were 100 people signed up to speak that night, and they moderated only loud 30 minutes, and half the people never got a chance to speak. So I mean, it's just, this whole thing, Fred, is just so frustrating. We just think that Amy should put together the committee of, of a lot of people, different inputs, so we can all come up with some real good ideas on how this thing works. Should we do a tipping fee? Absolutely, let's do it, but let's do it the right way. Let's not just jam it down people's throats, just because they want to fill up the gap, fill up that hole right now. And, and Fred, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm so excited about this.
That's okay, that's okay, you're, 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 you're doing fine. So is Amy, Amy still on? So Amy, if you could respond, there she is, okay, thanks, Amy.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, what we're trying to do, you know, Angelo and all the others for, for DPW is implement what the RTM passed. We are given that to do, but certainly in that ordinance, it says there is a working group to be put together and to look at this. And so that's something we have to do, and I'm sure folks like Mr. Pucci, who I've, I've met and others will be part of that group.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good, sounds good.
Okay, is that it, Angelo?
Well, like I said, Fred, I know you have to vote on this thing. Whether you have, when is your next meeting?
In two weeks.
Two weeks, is there any way of putting this off until two weeks, until we can at least get this committee started?
Well, I don't know if the committee's going to start that fast, Angelo, and certainly they wouldn't have a result. I think this committee's probably going to be formed later on in the summer or towards the fall, but even if they started it in two weeks, they're, they wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to, to, you know, come to, they wouldn't be able to do their fact-finding and come to produce a report. There's a lot that goes into it, it's not just tipping fees versus pay-as-you throw. I mean, I think there's going to be other, other options that are going to be looked at, any and all. So I think it's, it's not really that, that simple.
Yeah, but Fred, I, I, that pay-as-you throw, it sounded like the RTM just put that to bed forever. What I'm saying is, we could put this thing together with this committee very quickly to see how more recycling can be pulled out of this waste stream to save some money, okay? That committee could gather very quickly, it doesn't take much.
It's, it's a lot more than that, I think, Ange, but I, we are pulling, trying to, you know, as you know, with the food scraps and the composting and the textiles, we're really trying to, and I've had conversations with you about this, about trying to pull things out of there, but I, I really don't think we're going to be able to, to put it off. I mean, that's my view on it, and I don't know what Jill and Lauren think, but I mean, the RTM was pretty clear about this, and I, we, it wasn't, it wasn't very close, the vote. And we, as you said before, we have to, we're creating the, the budget right now, and there's lots of, lots of holes in there that have to be plugged. And this is, this is a, certainly a, a method that's, it's used in 167 of 169 towns. So I, I don't think putting it off is going to do anything, Angelo, right now. That committee will, will convene, and it probably will have something within 18 months. I know that was the number thrown around that night. I think it will be a lot sooner than that, but it's certainly not going to be a few weeks.
It, it sounds like it's not the tipping fee that Mr. Pucci is objecting to, it's the amount of the fee. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, yes, yes it is. Because, you know yourself, if I could take my garbage dump to dump and pay $25 for one year, why would I need a garbage van? I don't need, I don't need that. I know there will be a lot of loyal people, but you know, when you look at the difference in the cost of what it would cost to haul their garbage versus us hauling the garbage for the people that we, that pay us, it's such a big gap in there, and who's going to pick up the difference? Guess who's going to pick up the difference? The people who are paying for the hauling, they're going to be, they're going to pick up the slack. Because that $25 is not going to cover all those thousands of people that bring their garbage down to the dump themselves. Come on, look at those numbers, Amy, you should, you should see it yourself. Come on.
So.
That's what, that's what I'm objecting to, Fred. That $25 is not the right number, and if you vote on it, you know what will happen?
Well, it, yeah, I mean, it's, the RTM had voted on it, I, I couldn't agree with you more, and I stated it before and after, and I stated it again today. I think it's, it's unfair, and it's way too low. It may be good, structured fee system, it may be good, the $25 number for senior citizens, but not certainly for everybody else. But again, you know, we, I think we're all in agreement, and I spoke with some RTM members who are in agreement with you, and I think there's going to be a willingness to, to adjust that. But right now, that's, they've already decided on that for now, and you were right, they spent 30 minutes on it, which I thought was a joke, but you know, that's already been done. Unfortunately, I can't, we can't undo that. So, you know, that $25 fee, you know, I, certainly it's going to be revisited, I know that. How quickly, I don't, I don't know.
Well, Mrs. Oberlander made some very good points that I think needs to be looked into very quickly.
Well, I think everybody has said that, Ange, so I mean, again, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but the, you and I have had these conversations over a lot lately, and they were pretty clear that night about voting these fees in. I think, I think they got the $25 one very wrong, but that's already been done. So we have, we have to vote on that now, because it's, you know, the budget, they're going to be voting on the budget soon in, in June. So that's my take on it. Jill and Lauren.
I just didn't know.
Yeah, so.
I just didn't know to amend that $25 and go back to the RTM in June. That's all I'm saying, right? I mean, there's a lot.
Okay.
All right?
No, thank you. Jill, Jill was, thank you, Jill was saying something?
Yeah, Mr. Pucci, thank you for, for raising it, actually, it's a, it's a very good reminder that we haven't had that aspect of the conversation, you know, because there's been so much conversation about pay-as-you throw and tipping fees, but we really haven't talked about how the, how the tipping fees will be administered, as well as what the impact on the community will be, particularly in a time where the economic future of a number of our residents and businesses is unknown. That said, I, I am generally in favor of a tipping fee. The timing, however, is the question and the, the dollar value. And so I guess if we do vote on this today, I'm sort of torn between voting for it and abstaining, but I would ask Commissioner Seabert and, and First Selectman Camillo that, that we track very closely the experience and report back and, and put together that working group quickly to evaluate both means of reducing our total waste and perhaps allocating some, some of the funds from the tipping fee collected to implement waste reduction strategies and other environmental programs, but also to receive comments from the haulers to, to understand what their experience has been, because you do raise some very good points. We don't have the data points right now, and perhaps we might want to revisit the fee structure in, in very short term, if we find that the impact on our residents and businesses is so great that, that it's not the, the way we want to consider. So whether we, on the vote, if we take a vote now, or if we put it off two weeks to have those, some of those conversations first, it's, I'll leave that to you, Fred, but, but I do think that we should watch it very closely.
I, I could not, I could not agree with you more. Does the two weeks throw us off any, as far as, when is the RTM meeting? Does anybody have it in front of them?
I don't think that, it's my understanding that we set the fees, that the RTM doesn't have to then approve the fees that we, it's within our purview.
Well, that's what I thought, but they, they actually had, when they, they passed it in that, the other night in that vote, and I may supersede it, but let's ask the town attorney, then, if, what your thought is on that. Because now I, I thought that, since they did that, I was told that it superseded what we do, because.
I think they did the individual, like the $25 per individual, but it, we don't, if the 112, if we were to vote on that today, that, I don't believe goes to the RTM.
No, but I think what Angelo's talking about is not the tipping fee, he's talking about the $25 fee, and that's something I think bothers everybody. But I think, I was told, now that, let's get confirmation, that they, that was taken out of our hands on the 14th through the RTM vote. So then, then if. So then, then if you're on, is that correct? My, my thought process on that, that because the RTM voted that night for a $25 site access fee, that it took it out of the Board of Selectmen's hands?
Correct.
That is correct?
Correct.
Well, hold on Angelo, hold on, the town attorney is speaking, go ahead Ben.
Yes, you're, you are correct.
Thank you.
Were there two, were there two votes, one for the $25 vote and one for the tipping fee?
But the RTM passed it to the $25, it, it, it's my, it was my thought and the town attorney just confirmed it, if there's anybody else has a different, that they took it, their ordinance, their, their vote that night took it out of our hands, the $25 fee. Cause that's what you're talking about and that's what's, I think concerning a lot of people. But right now, I think that's, we have to go with that 25 because they, they're the ones, and I didn't, we're the Board of Selectmen, we didn't have a vote that night. We certainly didn't, we didn't weigh in on it. So that's already, unfortunately, that's what I was told and I just asked the town attorney that, and something that I mentioned to you earlier, that I think that it's out of our hands now. And we could certainly, as Jill and I were saying, we want this to be revisited, but right now, we don't have the power to do that.
Chief Fred, can you correct me, the attorney? Didn't they take two votes, Mr. Marino, that night? One vote for the $25 and then later on in the meeting, they voted for the $112 tipping fee. So why can't you abstain $25 one and go back to the RTM? But vote for the tipping fee now if you have to. We're not objecting to that, we're objecting to the, the discrepancies now with the 25 versus 112. That's what we're objecting to.
Again, I, Angelo, it, it doesn't matter, in my opinion, it doesn't matter if they were separated or not, they voted on it and, and, and the town attorney is agreeing with that. So we, we can't, the Board of Selectmen can't do something that we're not allowed to do. So again, it is, we all agree with you that that fee is too low and that there is a committee that's going to be impaneled and that hopefully they'll, they'll get to that sooner rather than later. But right now, with this, I don't think there's anything the board can do because of the RTM's actions on May 14th.
You can't table it?
We can, no, they voted, again, I'll let the town attorney explain it to you again because it's, I don't want it to look like it's my.
Also, Amy would like to speak, I believe, Amy, you have your hand up?
Was trying to answer one question, not to get in, in Vin's way about the, the legal side of the House, but from an implementation side, we would request that you all vote because we have the pleasure of trying to get this in place by the first of July. And if we look at what day it is, that leaves us basically, you can see we have one month to have everybody ready to go, meaning all those residential permits as well as commercial. So we do need to kind of know where we're going unfortunately, so.
So ultimately, the question is whether or not you're dealing with the ordinance, which the RTM has the authority, or are we talking about the implementation of the administration of the ordinance? If you're talking about the administration of the ordinance, then that would fall under the department. But if you're talking specifically about changing what the RTM has already approved, you would not have the authority to do that.
Okay, Angelo, did you, you hear that?
I heard it Fred, I heard it. But I'm back to Amy, can I just ask Amy another question?
Sure.
Amy, do you think, even with the $25 vote tonight, do you think you're going to be ready in one month to put this thing all together?
Angelo, what we have explained is we are going to do anything and everything in our power to get it ready. We have a number of things in place, things ordered, pay online approach we're putting into place very quickly, we're doing the best we can. We agree with many of the things you've commented on in terms of the fear about traffic and things of that nature, but we got to do what we were handed by this ordinance. So I think we'll certainly see a lot of discussion moving forward and we will be doing just what Jill was talking about, trying to keep track as best we can and get as many metrics as we can to see how this unfolds.
Good news is we're the traffic authority as the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Correct, and, and we are, we are monitoring it right now, as Amy can attest to. And just this past week, and when I stopped down there and I was getting, even when I left, I was getting pictures sent to me from residents about the, the traffic going out of there and backing up all the way almost to the post road. There is, there's going to be a lot of information to go on and that's why I think that I'm going to encourage that committee to be impaneled sooner rather than later to address this so we can get, fix that number, some, to make it more fair and also to address what's going to be an exacerbation of an already, you know, tough situation down there traffic wise in Chickahominy. With, with that, I don't know if there's anybody else? Hands are up, I don't see any.
Ready, Fred?
Yes.
Can I, can I thank you all for, for hearing me out?
Absolutely, absolutely, but we got to, you got to work on your computer skills, you got to learn how.
I got to get a new computer.
Angelo, that, thank, thank you so much and we, I think we're all, and we all sympathize with your point here and we will certainly be monitoring that and encouraging a resolution of that to address that situation sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you Fred, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you Angelo. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to accept the fees as presented?
I motion to accept the tipping fees for the municipal solid waste as presented.
If there's a second?
Jill, you're on mute.
I'm, I'm going to vote for it, but Fred, I'm going to ask you to second it.
Sure, yeah, I just, I started to.
Yeah.
I will second that, all those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Overlander votes yes, but with recognition of, of the comments made by Mr. Pucci and, and the comments before, Amy would appreciate it if, if you could keep us in the loop and report back as to how it's going in case we need to revisit the fee structure.
Lauren Raven votes yes and I echo Jill's thoughts, we really need to monitor this closely and frequently to make changes as fast as we can if, if warranted, both from a traffic standpoint or a fee structure standpoint.
Thank you, that's a three to nothing vote, but I'll just again repeat that I know how this is going to end up, it's, it's, it's going to get worse down there because of it. So I think we're all going to have to be a little bit forceful in our advocacy to get this corrected and this committee to look at it and maybe that's what, even before they, I know there's going to be a bigger, wider report that's going to be released by this committee. But I think maybe if we can get them to look at this $25 fee, the fairness question and also the impact on the neighborhood when it comes to traffic, I think the sooner the better, so maybe we can, we could discuss that in, in the next two weeks. So, but thank you and that's, thanks Angelo and that's a three to nothing there. So we will now move on to item B of new business, which is a temporary closure of Greenwich Avenue. We have started, before I turn it over to Ben, we are going to close the bottom two blocks of Greenwich Avenue. We have been over there repeatedly, Chief Heavy with the, Chief Pete, Chris has been there, I think Rob has been there, Amy's been there, Jim Michael has been there. I'm there every day looking at it, but I know they've been there almost as much if not more and lots of exciting ideas, both from the bottom and the top. But right now, we're trying to, to just, you know, do the crawl before the walk and focus first on the bottom of the avenue. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ben with the, the details, all right Ben?
Afternoon everyone, very briefly, several people are involved in the planning of this. I'd like to thank the Department of Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Planning and Zoning Department and Parking Services, they all worked collectively on this. Several members of the departments are attending this meeting. If you have content specific questions, we can answer, we can hopefully answer those for you. But just very briefly, some of the highlights of the document in front of you. This is phase one of three, we're only presenting the plan for, from Havemeyer Place to Railroad Avenue, which is the, the lower section of Greenwich Avenue. Pending the outcome of this meeting, staff will immediately begin to plan for phase two, which is listed in the document, which is Putnam Avenue to Lewis Street and phase three, which is Lewis to Havemeyer Place, with the goal of presenting to the next Board of Selectmen meeting, which is June 11th. Some very brief overviews of the stats, Greenwich Avenue in its, in its totality is 3,400 feet long or just about 0.65 miles. The section we're talking about is just under a quarter mile long. When you count up the restaurants on the avenue, not counting the side streets, there's 27 restaurants on the avenue and 17 of them are located in phase one, the section that's before you. We are proposing that the document before you would begin on Tuesday, June 2nd. We will be using, again, if you vote in favor of this today, we will be using both Friday, May 29th and Monday, June 1st as implementation setup time. We would, this will allow us time to sweep the street, install the signage, barricades and more importantly, I think also communicate with the, with the businesses in that area. The best two pages to look at, there's their narrative section, but pages 11 and 12 of the PDF show the, the plan. And very quick summary, phase one is place physical barriers at the intersection of Havemeyer Place, south to Railroad Avenue. A key function that we had to work through is make sure that we maintain emergency lane of 20 feet with controlled access point at Havemeyer Place. Control will be provided by a combination of parking enforcement officers and the Police Department with the time, with the schedule listed in the document. We're also trying to maintain an equal number of handicap parking stalls will be created as close as possible on the side streets to Greenwich Avenue to replace the displaced spots that were removed on the avenue. We've also set up stations that are optional for curbside pickup locations, so businesses could use those locations if they choose to provide curbside at certain areas. We're going to be at the top of Arch Street, Fawcett Place and Railroad Avenue. Part of the approval we're asking for is Fawcett Place with dead end at Greenwich Avenue and Grig Street, which is being temporarily converted to a dead end two-way road from its current one-way status. And we're also asking for modifications at the bottom of Greenwich Avenue at Railroad Avenue that would allow parking located behind People's United Bank to remain. With that, those introductory comments, we'll be happy to answer any questions or comments you may, you may have.
Fred?
Go ahead Jill, sorry.
So, thank you, I reiterate the thanks to all of the department heads who've worked so hard to put this plan together so quickly. You know, definitely something that I think is going to be really welcomed by our community and something I advocated for all last year as well. So I'm really, really appreciative of all the effort and, and thank you for the narrative of, well, the only, I had two questions on, on the plan as presented. On page four, there is a bullet that talks about suspending street sweeping. And I, I wasn't sure why that was necessary, given that my, my understanding, is it going to be 24/7 closure or is it a, a closure that only takes place at night? Or how, how is the closure working and why is it that we can't have street sweeping? I believe in other, other parts of the country where they do have pedestrian accessway, they do continue with street cleaning.
I'm looking at the bullet here under the Greenwich responsibilities limitations. The, the point here was just when you do street sweep, it does kick up a, a little bit. We certainly, if, if can be, and we can work out the hours of operation of street sweeping, we certainly can, can look at that if it's needed. But one of the main points is we want to get in there before we close it down also to do the good cleaning before we, we close it down. This document was just sort of the, when we came with, working with the Police Department of Public Works, come up with all the list of limitations and concerns we had. But it, it doesn't necessarily say it can't be done. If, if needed, we can take a look at what, what are our limitations on how to implement that.
Yeah, I would encourage, you know, obviously in Department of Health too, I'm sure cleanliness, given that it's going to be food services and, and high traffic, especially during this time of COVID, that we do our best to figure out how we can maintain the expected cleanliness level.
Absolutely, just, sorry, very quickly on that point is the difficulty is, is if, if the restaurants are using the parking and their tables are set up to your point that it's closed, they would have to remove those tables for allowing us to get access to the curb. So that's sort of the main point of why we couldn't do it.
Yeah, and I, I understand that that's inconvenient for them. However, I believe in other areas where they do have outdoor seating, there is a requirement for cleaning. So I think we should just figure out, I, I wouldn't start off maybe with the position that we're not going to do the street sweeping. We may have to work with the restaurants to have them on a regular removal basis or relocation so that the cleaning can proceed, just to make sure that everything is sanitary. The, the other question I had, and thank you for the number of restaurants, in phase three, how many restaurants are in that strip?
One, yes.
Yeah, so, and is that, that's Dwarro, is that the one?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, we received some, some communication from the owner of that building and I, I'm just wondering what can be done as an accommodation for that restaurant to, so that they don't have to wait to phase three? Given that we don't have to close down the entire street, perhaps there's actually been a, a blocked off parking, driving lane for construction work in, in the section, in that section actually, now that I think about it, for a while, but south of the restaurant. Is there a way that we could block out some space so that they could expand their outdoor dining?
So, so they already have. Hey Chief, Chief, let me just make one quick comment because I'm sorry, we, we did, I appreciate you bringing this up, I debated about whether or not we brought this up during the introductory comments, we did see the email communication this morning. We, we did, in speaking with conversations with Deputy Commissioner Jim Michael, if you approve the plan as presented, if you amend, if you give the approval that we can work, what we'll call nodes, so, and a node we'll say is about five, approximately five stalls. If you give us permission, we could work with the business community and implement that while we're, shortly thereafter implementing the closure, we could work on a way to provide that, that solution while we look at more of a longer term, whether or not it's worth closing the avenue. As we pick this section versus the other section, there's a lot more complication as you go up the avenue with, and it's a different use. But we do believe we could address the concern you, you, you mentioned. If, if you approve this plan with, given the administration the ability to work on nodes up in the avenue, where we would take parking stalls and have the appropriate traffic devices there to allow restaurants if needed.
That's terrific, thank you and thank you for responding to that. And the only other question I have is, other than the emergency vehicle access, which I understand has been addressed by both staffing and the extra lane, have there been any other community concerns that, that haven't, that, that, that haven't been discussed publicly? I'm just, I want to know what, what else is being said out there by the community that, in, in opposition to this proposal?
I mean, it hasn't been really opposition, but we've, Charlie Schwartz had reached out, he lives over on, on Soundview, he likes the idea, they were just concerned about their, we have one ingress egress, which we, we had talked about right off the bat on the first day. And even if, even if the avenue had been closed completely, we had to have one access lane for emergency vehicles and they would have been available of that lane, but that's not the case anymore. We, lots of the, and I haven't looked at all of them yet Jill, but, but the email that Marcia O'Kane sent out to the, to the merchants, so far it's very, very positive. With, you know, some have some questions and so about parking and things like that. and so about parking and things like that. Not to eliminate, there's going to be vehicular access, so there will be lots of parking spaces, even with these nodes available. There was some concern about, originally about the handicap and the elderly. This plan will address that. We also had in the paper, a bunch of us have been talking about a trolley system like they have in Harbor Point, which, you know, you can run it every 30 minutes going down the avenue. You can do it from Town Hall where there's some parking, and circle back, you know, around where the waterfront is, and then back up around to Field Point Road. And there's lots of things, it keeps evolving, but there's, as you can see, there's so many things added on in the future that can be really make this quite a nice attraction and destination for everybody. But right now, the main thing is to get it up and running and to get these businesses going. So we picked these two, the two bottom blocks with just minor adjustments to traffic, Fawcett and Grig. Any other? Saying, hey, this is a great idea, but what about us? And so we want to really, we're going, as we're opening up the first phase here, we are going, we are hard at work at phase two and three. Also, I want to thank, I don't think I mentioned Planning and Zoning. They were terrific from the beginning, Katie, Margarita, and everybody with their input and their advocacy and enthusiasm for this too. So I want to thank them, because they've been there from the beginning.
We have a hand raise, our reporter, Ken Borsec. So Ken, I'm gonna click on the button to allow you to talk. If you can please announce yourself.
Yes, thank you Lauren, Ken Borsec, Greenwich Time. I had a very quick question. It was unclear from this, what time? Would this be a 24-hour closure to vehicle traffic? Or this would only be for limited hours during the day? I see it goes till September 2nd, but would this be all day?
It would be all day. The exceptions would be for trash pickup and commercial vehicle, you know, delivery of supplies and emergencies. Those would be the only times.
Thank you Chief.
So Ben, do you need us to specifically authorize the node discussions? Or when we take a vote? Or is it just, you know, to understand that that's our sense?
I would prefer, if it works for everyone, that you would approve the plan as submitted but amended to include up to five nodes, working with the business community. And that would allow us to implement, I think, address most of the concerns, implement it faster than the meeting schedule.
Also, if we wanted, for additional community input, so once it starts, there might be other ideas, other, you know, issues. I don't think we have like a suggestion box per se. But, you know, could we consider creating something that's a little bit more formal in terms of getting community input? I know somebody will reach out to Jill, they'll reach out to me, they'll reach out to Fred, they'll reach out to all three of us. But if there is a more sort of operationalized way to get input, I think that people who still have concerns might feel better about that vehicle to get us concerns, or even accolades. Let's hope there's some accolades out there.
Yeah, I could answer that, Lauren. So yeah, we're, we've been telling everybody we needed to get started on this right now with all the stakeholders, fire, police, planning and zoning, law, risk management, the merchants, chamber. But lots of people are reaching out, and some are architects. Some people are in the restaurant business or are consultants. I walked the avenue yesterday with a consultant who had some great ideas. So what I've been saying is, we're gonna, let's get this going for a couple weeks, and then let's, we're gonna put together this, you know, whatever we want to call it, reopen Greenwich, reimagine Greenwich. And, you know, we're not putting any limit on the amount of participation, participants. So certainly anybody who contacts you that would like to offer their input, their skill sets, or also, people in other parts of the town are asking, hey, what about Chickahominy? What about Byron? What about Glenville? What about old Greenwich? What about Cosco? So we're telling them, get a group together, start talking, come up with some ideas. It doesn't, we don't have to wait for this to be done, for it to be, have a parallel track with other parts of town. So, and each of those towns offer their own challenges. Speaking with people in Glenville the other day, who are very enthusiastic, they know there's a lot of obstacles there, you know, about closures and things like that. But you never know, there may be a couple good ideas out there. So we're encouraging people to do it, and I think we should probably break it up that way and have it into sectors, because otherwise it just gets unwieldy, and we won't get out of our own way if we throw it all together.
Just want to correct my math. I think when I said 16, that wasn't making sense to me. If you have 27, you have the 17 below, and then it becomes nine and one. So I apologize for my mental math error.
No problem. You caught it. None of us caught it. Thank you, Ben. Any other questions on this before we approve it or vote on it? And I know Chris and Rob was on. Chris, you did the walkthrough here too, and the fire department's concerns early on were addressed, correct?
Yes, yes, we did a walk yesterday with Jim Michael, Pete Kerpesky, Carmine, a few other people, and we seemed to have worked everything out. We had some concerns with the 20-foot path down the middle of the road for emergency vehicles. The barriers will be painted instead of physical barriers on the sides. Brakes for the, you know, make sure we have hydrant access, fire department connections at the vehicles and such. So yes, they did address all our concerns yesterday. That was good.
Thank you, and thank you for your input from the beginning on this.
Yep. If I could interject, it's Rob here. My camera was turned off.
Hey Rob.
I do have a question, just for clarification. I was briefed by Assistant Chief Kek and Chief Szysinski, but I did not, I did not get a clarification on this. So in the proposal, you have three, there's three spots for curbside pickup. And I just, I'm wondering if that's, is that going to be a pedestrian pickup location? Or are we allowing cars into that area? It doesn't really clarify, and I guess you're pulling that up on information on page seven. It's also, it's in the diagram. So you have a spot right at the closure by Arch Street, a closure down by Fawcett, and then down around the corner at Railroad. So I don't know if Ben or Chief Heavy have information on that?
I think the best example is if you look at page 11, map one, where we see Fawcett Place with the curbside station. You see the two 15-minute parking spaces there. The concept is, again, no cars will be allowed on that portion of the avenue. If a restaurant decides to offer curbside pickup there rather than their location, you could have temporary parking at there, wait for the curbside pickup at the tables that would be provided by the restaurant. Or if it's not used, the patron could use, would go straight to the restaurant for pickup. But again, no parking, no.
No vehicles.
Cars, no vehicles on Greenwich Avenue, stands, emergency, and the deliveries that we talked about in the morning.
Great, that was just my concern, and thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you, Rob, and thank you for the, Ben, for that clarification. Any other questions? With that, is there a motion to approve the plan as presented for the lower half of Greenwich Avenue?
So I'm going to make a motion to amend the plan as presented to allow for the administration to develop five additional nodes in phase one. And then as amended, I'll move that, that we adopt that.
I second Lauren Raven.
Okay.
amended motion.
All those in favor of the amended motion, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes, but I ask that one of those nodes be identified for that one restaurant in phase three as well.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Okay, and that's, we had already discussed that. So it's a three-nothing vote there, and then we'll go back to the, to the plan as amended. Do we need another vote on that now? Jill?
I don't, do we, do we need a, I don't think we need another vote on that unless Ben tells us we do.
I believe a select person, Oberlander's motion was a motion to approve the plan with an amendment.
So, okay, so it's.
So it wasn't really an amended motion, it was a motion to approve with amendment.
Wait a minute, okay, so we got it.
Right, Margarita has her hand up, the Commissioner of Planning and Zoning.
Hi, Margarita, I'm gonna allow you to speak, and if you could announce yourself.
Hi, in regard to the five nodes, I know you voted, I raised my hand too slowly. I think, would you guys be okay with not designating a restaurant at this point, a specific restaurant, and letting all the departments decide how to prioritize those nodes? Because we've also heard in Planning and Zoning from another restaurant that's close to bankruptcy, and it would be better, I would suggest that if you guys don't mind, you let the chiefs and everybody weigh in, and DPW weigh in on how to allocate those five nodes. It, maybe it doesn't go, I understand the priority for Duro, but I would hate to hear what the other restaurants said, would say when they hear you picked one and didn't think about them.
I think, Jill, I was gonna, I don't want to speak for you, but I think they're already incorporated in the other nodes, but Jill.
Yeah, no, I don't know how the nodes are drawn out. I just had, since there was one restaurant that was delayed to phase three.
Okay.
The goal was to try to address that early on as opposed to, you know, otherwise. But again, it was my request was that the town consider it. And of course, it will be within the administrative power then to, and Planning and Zoning, I think as well, right? You have to sign off on.
On the permits, because they've got to go, they've got to go into the streets. So we've got to sign off on the permits. But as Fred said, the moment we do one section, everybody's going to be hollering. So it's a question of how, having all the departments weigh in on striking that balance. But if you're just asking to consider it, I think Chris Pratiko and Jim Heavy and Amy and Ben would be fine with that, right? Okay, I'll be quiet now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Margaret.
Thanks, thanks, Margarita. Okay, so that's approved, amended. And with that, thanks everybody for weighing in on it. So we go to the last item of new business as we come towards the end of the meeting, or close to it. It's what Jill had asked to be placed on, which is the interim, interim appointment of Chief, W. Chief Kek to be the acting chief for the fire department. And I'll turn it over to you, Jill.
So I'll start with, thank you to Chief Szysinski, who's not on the call, surprisingly, for his years of service to the community and for the courtesy that he has shown to me personally, actually, in both educating me about fire services and being so responsive to any questions that I've had. It's been a real pleasure to get to know him and see the great quality of his work. Similarly.
Billy froze.
Me great opportunity to welcome him as the interim chief as well, and to thank him as well. He's been a wealth of information throughout my years in town service. So the reason I placed, that I asked that this be added is that the Board of Selectmen does have limited responsibilities. And one of them, under the charter, is the appointment on the recommendation of the First Selectmen of department heads under the control of the First Selectmen. There is a specific, in addition to that explicit language in the charter, there's also a specific section that deals with the appointment, the filling of vacancies in the fire chief office. So given that, and I, and, you know, understand that there's a concern about, in the event of an emergency, would this hamstring the First Selectmen? This is not that case. This is the case where the appointment letter does not commence until June 1st, which, so we're in advance. And given that we are actually meeting, I hate to run afoul of the charter and also not have the opportunity to vote on the appointment of Assistant Chief Kek, especially when it's a charter direction. So I asked to put this on the agenda. I do think it is a charter responsibility of the Board of Selectmen, so I also want to be compliant in that way. And that is, that's why I raised it.
Thank you so much, and I do want to thank you for reaching out and calling me today and expressing your concern. And it's something, when you first heard about it, that you raised this week, kind of makes sense to me. And then doing research and then talking to various people in town, HR, a couple town attorneys, former First Selectmen, and how they've done, you know, in the past and precedent, and the fact that the charter, you know, you had alluded to one section, there was another section that, you know, said something else. I know there are many people, I know John Wetmore has been appointed this way, Amy Seabert, HR said there's been many, many other ones. And I just, again, sometimes you have to make decisions, you know, just acting, for somebody to be acting for a couple weeks, couple days, couple months, nothing long-term. So I just, I'm a little uncomfortable doing that. Certainly, when, as we go through the process of selecting a permanent one, the charter is very clear on that. And so I'm okay with it being the way it is. And plus, I've already, we've already sent the letter to Deputy Chief Kek. So, you know, Ben is still on. Again, I've had multiple conversations with John Wetmore, who was pretty strong in his view on this. I spoke with Mary Pepe today, who also agreed, and I did speak with you, so.
Yeah, I'm pretty strong, actually, in my read of the charter as well. So, and I can point you to the direct language on, find it back up again. It scrolls down, so. So two.
And can you share your screen, or whoever has it up? Are you able to share your screen?
Um, I don't know how to do that, actually, share screen, but.
Lauren? I mean, Jill?
Yeah.
If you like, if you have it on your screen, just make sure everything else is closed.
Wow.
Okay?
That would be a nice thing.
Okay, well, what I'm gonna, let's just give it one shot. If it doesn't work easily, I'm going, if. If it doesn't work easily, I'm going, if, if Craig can please make you a co-host, because co-hosts can share their screen.
Okay, so I am.
I'm gonna make you a co-host.
I'm now a co, I'm a co-host, although, so my screen.
You can click the green button on your screen and then just make sure you only select the screen that shows the charter section that you want to show.
All right, I don't, because I have the charter section up now, I don't see a green, oh, I see share screen.
Yeah, so the, now you'll see a bunch of different screens you can choose from. You see the.
Yeah, except that I don't see.
Take your time.
Let me see if I can, oh, here.
And then you click share. There is a button on the, on the screen. After you select the screen, there you go.
Okay, so, and can you, I don't know how much of my screen you guys can see, actually, because I can't see it, so.
That's good, that's good. I think if you leave it that way.
Okay, so if you look at Section 217. It's covered by me, close this, okay. All right, Appointment 28, Section 218, okay. A, the Board of Selectmen may, subject to provisions of this article and the recommendation of the First Selectmen, the provisions of Section 226, 230, and 233 of the Charter notwithstanding, appoint and remove all heads of departments which are under the supervision and the control of the First Selectmen. Then you go down to, so that is the appointment and removal provision of the department head. Then if you go down to 230, if I'm fire, 233B, the Board of Selectmen may make an appointment to fill any vacancy in the Office of the Fire Chief whenever it may occur. So one is the permanent and one is a vacancy appointment, which in looking at the appointment of Assistant Chief Kek, this, it seems to be a vacancy appointment presented as an, as an interim with a start date, a salary increase commensurate with the responsibilities of the job, the authority in the job, as well as no end date.
I think the key word was "may" in there. And again, precedent, it's always been done this way. And to your point earlier today, just because it's always been done that way doesn't mean it's the right way. But it's, we've never had, in all of our recollections, it's never really fielded us, except for in one case, somebody was appointed interim who didn't turn out okay, but it was only because they had an issue in parking services. But I'll turn it over to Ben in a second. But again, I think our, our system here with our former Merrill T, our First Selectmen, I think, not so much for me, but going forward, I just worry about Jill going forward. Again, I gotta use that word hamstring. I know you're saying, well, this, it takes effect June 1st, so there's no emergency. Yeah, but again, if we start doing this now, who's to say in the future? Someone's gonna say, well, you know, back in 2020, Camillo did this, and now why aren't you doing that? And again, we may have this whole, whole thing that we just went through on May 14th with the RTM. So I real, I'm uncomfortable doing it. I certainly respect your view on it. But I, again, I've had enough time to think about it and certainly with my conversations, that I'm just not comfortable doing that right now. Just because, not that, I know you're, to your, you know, just so people don't think Jill's not against the.
I want to be able to vote on this appointment.
And, and if you don't, it's, I want to make it clear, you support Assistant Kek, Chef, Kek being the assistant, they being the chief temporarily. So that's not an issue. I don't want people to think that you, you are. But it's just, I just don't have the same view on it as you. But Ben, do you?
Yeah, before, before we go through, there's no other purpose for that language in the charter. I mean, perhaps you'd like to give me some purpose for the Board of Selectmen may make appointments. There's no express authority given to the First Selectmen to make those appointments. The appointment authority is given to, in the language, to the Board of Selectmen, including the vacancy appointments. And maybe, Ben, when you comment on it, you could tell me what other purpose would there be in the charter for that language?
Again, it's, the key word is there, and my view is "may." If we, this is not, we don't have a Merrill T like in Stanford, like David Martin has, who works a very strong one. We, I, you have to, the Board of Selectmen, and I agree with this, has to approve all of the First Selectmen's appointments for permanent department heads. But there's, speaking with HR today, there's been lots of cases where, you know, we've done temporary acting appointments just to get us through a few days, a few months, a few weeks. And I don't see, you know, why all of a sudden you want to change that right now at this.
There's a specific vacancy language on Fire Chief. And I believe it's similar, although I have to go back and look at the exact, with its exact same language for police as well, so.
Thank you. No, thank you. And then, and there was another part of the charter that we, I guess, other past First Select women and men have relied on. Do the acting.
Yeah, so this is obviously a very nuanced issue. It is, some may say it's splitting hairs, but, so, Select Person Oberlander is correct that 218 gives the general authority for department head appointments, subject to certain other provisions. Those other provisions relate to the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, and I believe the purchasing agent. So while Section 218 is instructive, it's really not applicable here because Section 233 addresses the Fire Chief specifically. And so now the question is, is the appointment of an interim the same as what Section 233 contemplates, which is the filling of a vacancy of the Office of Fire Chief, which contemplates the appointment of a Fire Chief, not an interim Fire Chief? And we have another section to consider, and that is under Section 217A, which I believe, Mr. First Selectman, you were kind of referring to, where the First Selectman has, and the charter provides, the First Selectman shall have the supervision and control and shall be responsible for the administration of all the affairs of the town in respect to such departments, and may fix and determine the internal organization of such departments, the number and kinds of offices and positions, and the methods of procedure, subject to appropriation. So really, it's how the board and/or how it is viewed, is this because it's the appointment of an interim? Is this an interdepartment organizational issue, which I believe is what the First Selectman is, is kind of looking at it as on an, on an interim basis? And, or is it an appointment that is subject to 233? And so, you know, I believe that there is authority, and I have spoken to Attorney Wetmore, who has said that there is precedent based upon what the First Selectmen had said, or First Selectmen haven't done this before. But I do understand Select Person's Oberlander's argument. But I do believe the First Selectmen does have that authority under 217 on a limited basis, until such time as a full-time or a permanent Fire Chief would be appointed. And at that time, of course, it would need to come to the Board of Select.
So I, I'm going to actually take exception to your interpretation of 217A, which I believe is actually more about the organization administratively of the department, speaking in terms of how your headcount and your order, and not specific as to personnel actions. I can understand, we talked about this briefly earlier, and we, you know, this came up at the last minute, so neither one of us has done complete review. You certainly have far more resources at your disposal than I do. But I would, I would suggest that that administrative procedure that you're talking about is, is not referring to specific appointments of personnel, which are spelled out in other provisions. If it were, you wouldn't need those other provisions, actually. And the other provisions do specifically identify that appointments of personnel subsidiary to the department chiefs are identified by the department heads. It's interesting, actually, when you say, I actually don't think that, in this case, I think it's a vacancy appointment. So the 233B applies, because it refers to a vacancy in the, in the office. But I think two, whatever the right number is, 218, perhaps?
Wait, 218.
218, where it, the language is not, it, it's, it's not withstanding these other provisions. The board actually has the appointment. So this is, this is true legal splitting of pairs that Ben and I can go offline on. I will probably put ratification of this action on, ask to put it on the next meeting agenda as well, Fred. I would like the opportunity to vote and ratify Assistant Chief's appointment as interim chief. And I also think structurally, I think it is actually a charter requirement. So I, and there is no emergency, and we are in, in close communication these days, so I see no risk. I would, I would suggest that maybe we don't, you don't rely on past practice where it was arguably considered with the charter.
I would just point out one other thing, and I believe, and, you know, the, those from the departments can correct me, but I believe certain organizations, certain departments, like the police, like, and fire, follow a, kind of almost like a military form of command, that in the absence of a chief.